Welcome and thank you for joining us this afternoon for our City Council meeting to talk about a resolution, a face covering resolution, or an emergency health plan for the city of Pocatello. With that being said, we'll go ahead and get started. Ruth, could you please call the role?
Yes, sir. Adamson?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Gina?
Here.
Lorette?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Blatt?
Here.
Thank you. We'll jump to Agenda Item Number Two then, as Pocatello City Council will discuss their recommendations towards development of a citywide emergency health plan resolution. With that, our clerk has gone to -- the City Council has given some input, is that right?
I've received input from Councilmember Stevens, incorporated that into the draft, and really, a lot of the "whereas's" are similar to what you saw in the draft ordinance that we talked about several weeks ago. And based on the discussions that we've all had, I did my best to encapsulate as much of that as I could. So it's really -- and I think the record should be clear that even though I'm not here to take minutes of the video, this is not something that the legal department is pushing. We were simply just asked to prepare the draft, and that is for you all to now consider. I'm not saying I'm a for or against it, I'm just saying that this is not a legal threshold or requirement.
You've been directed as our attorney to do your work.
Exactly, yep.
This is -- that's a very political response from our attorney. Holy, thanks for that clarification. Anyway, we do have a resolution that has been prepared. Our attorney did say the wording is like it was in an ordinance. I want to make the public know we are not talking about an ordinance right now, we're talking about a resolution. There's a difference in things, and so this would be a resolution by the City Council. Council President Adamson, I saw your hand came up.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out about an ordinance. An ordinance is a law that is enforced, and a resolution is just encouragement and a statement from the council. So I thought that our legal department did a great job on preparing it, and I don't have any concerns with it, so I think we -- unless somebody else has something that they felt like needed to be changed on the wording, I think we're probably good to go.
Well, some of us haven't seen it yet, so we can't anywhere at. Yeah, I was gonna say, if you have -- if everybody hasn't seen it, our clerk was getting it out.
Yeah, no, I'm reading it.
It was loaded to our -- It was loaded to the --
Yeah, it was loaded, and it was on the city website and available to read. So I'm sorry, I thought everybody had had a chance to do that.
All right, well, let's -- we'll go ahead and hopefully she will give back.
Has she changed what we received in the package?
No, what you received is what was posted for the agenda for tonight's meeting, a draft resolution, and it hasn't changed since that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Council, why don't we go ahead and take a few minutes so you can read through it, and then we'll go from there.
It should have been attached to the agenda.
Yeah, it was.
I missed it, I'm sorry, Ruth.
Okay, okay.
It was, I just didn't catch it.
You may not have got your thing open with your hands, so.
I think that's a good point.
Thank you.
That's a good point.
That's the excuse I'm gonna use.
I didn't just miss it, I didn't even have my thing open.
Do you want to add it, or you guys?
My dog's smart, but he doesn't have thumbs. Very much.
What's that commercial? I don't have thumbs! I don't know.
For the bacon treats for dogs?
Oh.
Have to spell the word bacon at my house.
Oh, really?
If you say the word bacon out loud, my big dog loses his mind.
We'll be spelling before very long. That's right.
Mm-hmm.
I would say that we might want to include the fact that the White House Task Force has Idaho listed as being in the red zone, so I'm not saying that we're in the red zone, but I'm saying that on a national scale, you know, based on --
I think they actually identified Bannock County as in the red zone a few days ago.
Great, so that -- and that comes directly from the White House.
And they suggested that local jurisdictions in such areas mandate wearing face masks.
Right, so I think it would --
However, we've had a decline in cases in Bannock County. That information is weeks old. By the time they get it and issue --
So when do we become proactive instead of reactive, Ruth?
Well, I still think it's worth noting in some -- to some degree that --
So when we're in the red zone, they didn't do anything? Hold on, just a minute, Council. We can't have people talking back and forth and having a number of different discussions during while somebody's speaking. It makes it very difficult to do for minutes and everything else, and very hard for the public to understand. Chris, you have the floor, thank you.
So I make a motion that we include language indicating that the White House Task Force indicates Bannock County as a hotspot.
Second. Where did you want that included, Councilmember Stevens?
So, we have a motion on the floor.
To include the wording?
Oh, did I -- we have a second? Okay.
Rob, who seconded it?
Me.
Oh, sorry, I couldn't --
That's okay.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Now the discussion. The question is, Councilwoman, where do you think it would be appropriate to add this?
Any place in the list of "whereas's."
I would put it right before the "whereas," the health and safety of all citizens of the city of Pocatello, on page three.
Page three.
I would put it right before that. See if you agree.
Okay.
Because then the next "whereas" is the health and safety of all citizens, so.
Okay, we have a motion by Stevens and a second. Is there any other -- by Ortega, is there any other discussion?
I would just be a little concerned about putting something in that is a rating that is changing.
Hotspot is --
All of this in here is kind of, you know, talking about the situation overall from the beginning, but it's not saying at any point that this is where we're at, because that could change. I mean --
We could put "area of concern" rather than "hotspot."
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, so are you --
I will amend to say rather than the word "hotspot," "area of concern." Thank you.
Well, the word "hotspot" wasn't my concern. My concern is putting a rating that is at a particular time that could change.
It could get worse.
It could get worse, it could get better, but that's my point, that can change.
But also, I don't think our language should be tied to something that is a moment in time, it should be overall.
This whole resolution is tied to a moment in time, which is the COVID pandemic, and none of us knows how long it will last or when it will end, and it didn't occur, it was not an issue of concern prior to January, so this entire resolution is tied to a specific issue over which we have, A, no control, and B, no sense of time span.
I don't disagree, but that's not a moment in time, that's an ongoing thing.
Okay, so what's your alternative?
I'm expressing my concern about putting in a rating that is something specific that can change.
That's fine, and I understand that, but what -- so then what else -- do you have an alternative verbiage proposed, or, you know?
I don't see that we need to put something like that in.
Okay.
I don't see that it is necessary with everything that's in here. I think it needs to be about the whole situation and not tied to some specific rating that could go up or down.
So I have a -- I do have two quick questions. Number one is, does the White House Task Force, is it still an area of concern, or has it been an area of concern? We've had some declining, has that changed?
Changed.
The area of concern, or is it still an area of concern?
It's still is.
We were listed fourth out of five states two weeks ago, and now we're not listed in the information being put out from the White House, and now we're not listed in the top five.
Okay.
So that has changed a little bit.
Okay. But an area can be larger than our city as well, and if you look, we have two contiguous counties that very much qualify right now. Bingham County, Power County, both are in the moderate risk category. We have been in the moderate risk ourselves.
And I'm not disputing that.
So I don't have any problem saying an area of concern. I just do not, I think it alerts people.
An area of concern is fine, but putting the White House rating in is what I'm discussing.
I don't believe I mentioned a White House rating, I said the White House Task Force had indicated.
Red zone.
And I changed that.
Changed it to an area of concern.
To an area of concern.
So I have another question. Jared, if we pass a resolution, if the Council passes a resolution tonight, when does this resolution, it goes into effect, the date of signature?
Correct.
When does it end?
The final, let's see here. The final "whereas" mentions that the mayor and county do hereby adopt the following recommendations, which is the now-therefore portion, which shall be in effect for as long as necessary for the fight in the fight against COVID-19.
So would it then, would it then be dissolved when COVID-19 is no longer a issue or a concern, area of concern?
It's when we decide.
Which is a really tough benchmark, correct? And I grappled with that, and the expiration date, but I think there's just no way to know what that might be reasonably, so the resolution would take effect and the encouragement would be in effect for as long as whatever it is that fight is deemed to be a fight.
So I'm not looking for a date. I guess I'm trying to figure out, what I'm trying to do is say, okay, if we were to approve this, the motion that had been to add this "whereas," as the White House Task Force has identified Bannock County as an area of concern, in 10 years, does this resolution still stand that the White House thinks this area is of concern, or does this kind of dwindle away in a year and a half when COVID dwindles away, or do we, as a council, need to revisit this and?
I would suggest that at some point, when the battle against COVID-19 is not such a concern, and let's hope that's sooner rather than later, that the council revisits this and rescinds this resolution.
Okay.
And to the other discussion, I might add, if you look through the "whereas's," it lists several steps and things that have taken place, and they all list them by specific date this happened, specific date this happened. And I understand what Councilmember Lurick is talking about as far as this being more of a moving rating or situation, so perhaps the fix would be, and I don't know what the information would need to be or where we would get it, but the fix would be, on such and such a date, Bannock County was declared to be whatever that rating was, and I would have to do some searching to find out what that would look like. I'm doing some now, actually, and I find anything real specific. There's been press briefings, as you all know, almost daily, and so it's hard to find a specific benchmark, if that's a direction the council wants to go as far as how to mention that. But I understand the concern of, if you just mention it as a, we are in this, that might change real quickly. So you're better, if you want to go there, to tie it to a specific event, or a specific briefing, or a specific report by date, or effectiveness, or something like that.
So would that be something that the Southeast Side of Public Health would be able to help with, a date of when they had done that, would they know?
Possibly, I don't know. I mean, I can continue to look online, but there's a lot out there.
I think since we're riding an up-and-down cycle, an area of concern lets us ride an up-and-down cycle. It doesn't date us to a certain time or anything. We know in our hearts and our minds that this is probably going to be with us for quite a while, until there's a vaccine and enough people are inoculated to help knock this down. Or a cure. But the cure may be much harder to find than a vaccine. So I have no problem just saying there is an area of concern, and letting people understand, be aware of that concern is an important quality of their life. I also think that, yeah, this is another "whereas" later on.
We could also go from Dr.
Briggs?
Right, because just a few days ago, she made a press release that, you know, that rural areas, basically, this is a nationwide problem because we now have rising rates in rural areas, so we could, I would be fine with having it say some, and she's --
Let's just vote on this one. And we've got a motion on the floor, so let's not create another.
So unless somebody has alternative language, then I guess I'd like to call a question.
I just have a question about the placement. Does Jared have recommended the spot based on the things he brought earlier and timelines about where it should go in the resolution? It seems kind of weird in a place that maybe we discussed, in between the, it seems like those two paragraphs went together, I don't think it'd be --
It could come right after their world health.
I just didn't know if it should be up in, we're talking about the CDC and stuff like that, rather than at the end. I don't know. I would almost say just let him pick where is the best place to put it in, but.
There really is no right or wrong as far as placement, other than just making it for ease of reading and ease of understanding. Most of the dates that I did mention, I tried to just put in chronological order, but there are some that don't have dates that are plugged in, and so it was really kind of subjective things to where to put what "whereas," but where was suggested by Councilmember Ortega, I certainly have no problem with that.
Okay, no, and I'm fine with whatever you think, I mean, Connie asked where would we want it, so I just --
That was, that's a suggestion.
But I'm not, I don't care.
Okay, thank you very much, Dan. We do have a motion on the floor from Stevens and a second by Ortega. Ruth, could you please call the role?
Yes, sir. Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson? I'm sorry, I just wanted to -- sure, can we read back what it is? The actual wording?
Yeah.
The motion to include the White House Task Force has identified Bannock County as an area of concern.
Okay.
My initial reaction was that the resolution was good, and it was okay the way it was, and I hate to make more time for our staff, but it sounds like there are going to be some additional, maybe additions, and we're going to be going down that route anyway, so I guess, given that, I'm okay with it, so yes. Gray?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Lorette?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Roger, I have an additional "whereas," and it has to do with Dr. Bricks.
I'm sorry, what's that?
For me?
Dr.
Dr. Bricks, she's the White House coronavirus.
It's Bricks, B-I-R-X.
Well, I've heard it said Bricks, too, so. So anyway, whatever her name is spelled, B-R-I-X, the White House coordinator for the coronavirus has said, but more importantly, if you're in a multi-generational household and there's an outbreak in your rural area or in your city, you need to really consider wearing a mask at home. We have so many intergenerational homes, and I just think since this is an educational piece, that's an important thing to put in there, because it's like many other diseases that are communicable, it's who you've been with, it's what you carry to someone else. And I think that that is one of the most valid educational pieces for people to realize that it can go into your home through one person. And there are a lot of intergenerational activities in our community, and I just think that's an important "whereas" to include.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Gray and a second by Ortega.
I'll be back, sir.
Discussion, it's just a state machine. Thoughts, Council, discussion?
I think you've gone too far when you go into somebody's home.
We're only making recommendations.
That's right.
And we're trying to educate people.
The concept of going into someone's home is over the line.
Well, and that's your point? My point is that everybody should be educated that when they go into somebody's home and doesn't wear a mask, they are going over the line. That's our differences here, Rick. I think there's a difference if somebody else goes into somebody's home and doesn't put a mask on, it's one thing, but when you go into your own home, and my kids come into my own home, I think that's what Rick is talking about, is --
It's my business, it's my home.
It's an intergenerational home, and all we're doing is considering, the word "consider" is in here. This is simply saying you should think about what you're doing when you are mixing people that go in many different contiguous circles. That's all it's saying. Okay, and you have the wording of that motion.
Which one of these? Do you want all of these?
No, it's just the one down here. But more importantly, if you're in a multi-generational household.
Can you read the whole quote so that everyone understands?
Yeah, but more importantly, if you're in multi-generational households and there's an outbreak in your rural area or your city, you need to really consider wearing a mask at home. A resolution isn't an intrusion, this is a way of educating.
I'm sorry, Councilman, I just want to make sure, I'm reading an article that has that same quote, and it continues on, and so I would suggest if you're going to quote, that it be the whole quote. Do you have a continuation of that quote, or is that where it ends?
No, my quote ended there.
Okay, so that's one concern I would have, if we're going to quote a specific person, it has to be accurate.
Well, and what did she say?
I'm looking at a CNN article, and this isn't for debate, this is just for your information. It goes on, once it was stuck there, it says, well, I'll read the whole quote. It says, "If you're in a multi-generational household and there's an outbreak in your rural area or in your city, you need to really consider wearing a mask at home, assuming that you're positive if you have individuals in your households with comorbidities."
Okay, I'm okay with that now.
And I'm just, yeah, I'm just letting you know, that's what, at least CNN is reporting as the entire sentence.
Okay, I'm okay with that. I think I got an AP story. Okay, how do you?
I really do think there was a lot of good information in the resolution, and I think our legal department did a good job trying to keep it concise and keep it to the main points, and I just hesitate to see us add, just keep adding a lot of extra quotes and stuff to it. I think we want people to read it and understand it, and I just have hesitation about continuing to add things that make it longer, and so I guess at this time, I don't think that we need to.
And I speak to it. I have a real problem with us assuming that the local health board will take a positive action that is a deterrent. I listened to their meeting, they probably met today, but their last meeting that I listened to prior, they were not acting, in my opinion, as a health board. They were acting as rural agents who were more concerned about their rural location than the whole collective area they were managing. And as a result, they didn't want to define things very well, and we've had two of the areas move into the moderate-risk area to counties, because I don't think they showed enough seriousness. And our job, in my mind, is to say that there is a serious nature to this issue, that we need to meet it head-on with the same resolve, we do everything else, and I don't think adding to it does any harm, especially when this is an evolving thing. If data is two weeks old, then a lot of our information that went into this is two weeks old as well. And Dr. Bricks is the White House coordinator. I don't know that we can go any higher in this, you know, in terms of a pecking order than somebody that can speak authoritatively to this.
I would say that despite the fact that people know that really, so when I'm wearing a mask, it feels to me as though I'm protecting me, but in fact, and I am to a degree, but the primary goal that I'm achieving is that I am protecting other people. And I think that's what's important about this intergenerational idea, that just because grandkid knows grandma who lives with them, doesn't mean that grandkid can't bring something home to a person who, you know, is vulnerable. And so, and I think the complete quote that you referenced speaks to that, clarifies that, and I do think that that's a helpful piece of information, because we tend to think of our close relatives as harmless to us just because they're our blood, and in a situation like this, that is not true, and they may in fact, they may in fact be some of our greatest vulnerabilities. And I think it's worth pointing that out, because it's not a logical place that we go as humans.
So I'm just going to interject here, I think I understand what Roger's trying to do here, but I also agree with Rick, at some point, we're overreaching into people's homes. We still have the ability to say yes or no, you can or can't come into our home. And I haven't seen my own parents for quite some time because of that very thing. I have had cousins that have wanted to come and stay with us, and I've said, no, you can't because of that very thing. My own kids, when they go somewhere else that we're not sure that they're protected, we say, don't come to our house for two weeks. So we have some control of that, and my concern that I would have would be have, would the perception, I understand what the intent here, I think, but the perception from people we have heard from is, you are overreaching government, you, it is not, tell us what we can do out in the public, that's fair. When I cross that doorstep going into my own home, that's a different domain, and you don't get to tell me what I do there, unless it's illegal activity, unless it's, you know, some of those things. So I, it's kind of a difficult one, because it does, it almost feels like we're crossing a line that people are concerned with, but the education piece is the piece that I'm interested in finding out, how do we get that education piece out there without crossing that line? So when, I guess I'm -- That's why, that's why we're doing a resolution, trying to define the nature of this in a least obtrusive, intrusive way that we can, and there are facts that people are not hearing, and they will hear these facts if we state them in our resolution, I believe. We're not marching into their home. It's been a big issue about enforcement, there's no enforcement quality to this. This is simply suggesting that you need to be concerned about how you function as a family, or a neighbor, or whatever, if you're having people in your home and they're not wearing masks. And it says intergenerational, explain them.
Ruth, could you read the motion as it, the full motion as it is now worded, or Jared or somebody?
Jared has the full wording, I don't.
I can read the full quote, so that I can basically --
Well, not just the quote, but whatever the language that was Roger's prehanded.
I just said "whereas Dr. Bricks," Brick, whatever her name is.
Yeah, I can add that. Basically, it would read "whereas Dr. Bricks, the White House Corps of --"
Basically, it would read, whereas Dr. Bricks, the White House Coronavirus Task Force Coordinator, stated, "If you're in a multi-generational house, if you are in multi-generational households and there's an outbreak in your rural area or in your city, you need to really consider wearing a mask at home, assuming that you're positive if you have individuals in your households with comorbidities."
And I think that doesn't say anything other than communicate a piece of educational information. It's like saying, you know, whereas the, who has declared an outbreak as an emergency of international concern, it doesn't mean that we're going to try to assume any responsibility or any action on the international stage. It simply is a piece of informational, information, context. And I, I hear the way, you know, if the resolution, or if the whereas is worded as you say it, it's literally a piece of information. It's not encouraging anything, it's not suggesting anything, it's, it's simply saying, whereas there's, this is a piece of the context.
The action happens after we state the wherases.
Right.
And therefore be it resolved. That's the part that we're getting into people's lives more.
Right.
The wherases is simply saying, this is the background out of where we're actuating this.
Because we're, for example, yes, we're, if, if we were to say, now therefore be it resolved by the New York City Council, blah, 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 you know, that, that intergenerational homes are strongly encouraged, then I, then I, I think we would be clearly in that, you know, in that overreach arena. But I don't think that we're in that overreach arena by, by simply stating a fact.
So a concern I also have is, a lot of people don't understand the difference between an ordinance and a resolution. We've got, we, Channel 8 did a story about the city council doing a face-covering requirement, how did that, how was that, required city council of Pocatello is having a meeting to require face masks. Well, that, that would be an ordinance, not a resolution. And so when you have people thinking, oh, the city council is doing this now, and then you come out with something like that, that, I, this one really is a tough one for me because I understand that the education piece, we need to be encouraging people to pay attention to who's coming in and out of their homes, and who's, where they're going and what they're doing, but I, I can see where people will interpret this, and will absolutely do interpret this, is, this is a requirement, this is, and we already have people that are saying that you're overreaching by requiring, requiring face masks, although we know we're not requiring them, this resolution is encouraging.
I would rather overreach and have a person mad than underreach and have people sick. That's my position. I think overreach that might make somebody mad based on conjecture versus what we do that has the ability to educate people and perhaps save the spread of that, that is our onus on us. Our onus isn't to interpret this to every person. Our onus is to educate people with the best information available to us and get it out there.
Okay. Any other discussion? So we have a motion by Bray and a second by Ortega. Ruth, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
No.
Gina?
No.
Lurick?
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
Black?
As I stated before, this is a difficult one for me because of the education piece. I do believe, though, that there's too much overreach when we go into people's homes, and so I don't think that we should be overreaching into people's homes, so I would be a no. I am interested in an education piece, how we get that out of, for people to be educated on that.
I was going to suggest, could that become part of our ongoing campaign? I think it's worth...
I think so.
Putting out there and having that part of that. I just don't want to get this too complicated.
Yeah, I think so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Roger, I would encourage you to rewrite that and take "home" out of it. I think it's a good idea, but you've got to take "home" out. Multi-generational family, something, so you're not invading, it doesn't sound like...
So if we just removed "home" from her statement? Well, I don't want to...
But we can't change her quote.
Don't change her statement, but get the gist of the statement and remove "home."
You can characterize.
You can not make it a quote and say what you want to say, but if you're quoting somebody, you have to quote them accurately.
So if we simply said, she's referenced that you're in a, if you're in a multi-generational setting?
Or family.
Well, setting allows a wide interpretation. And that could be the lava pool party.
COVID hot springs.
COVID hot springs. I know. Scummy.
And you know, I looked it up, just a little aside, they're advertising that they're not limiting any capacity at that pool.
And they're not.
And it's a state facility. So anyway, that's a little aside. So, so would you accept, if I amend this to simply says, whereas Dr. Breck, is that the way you...
Berks.
Berks? Whereas Dr. Berks, the White House Coronavirus Coordinator, referenced the fact that if you're in a multi-generational setting and there's an outbreak in your rural area or your city, et cetera, et cetera. Is that what?
If I leave "home" out of it, I'd go with it.
Okay.
I do worry that you're editing the quote at that point.
I don't think that, I don't think that's a problem. I mean, we edit quotes all the time, we're referencing information, and if, and we're not misrepresenting the quote or editing it in order to misconstrue its meaning, I don't find that a problem.
Okay, thank you. Heidi?
I really believe that we're, we could add stuff to this all day. I think it accomplishes the intent that we tasked our legal department with, and I hate to see us adding quotes and stuff like that to it. I really think we've got the meat in here, we've got the important things that, that we need to have, and so I would like to proceed with it as is, and if I need to make a motion to that effect, I would be happy to do it.
We don't have a motion.
I really feel like I don't, I don't want to keep, you know, making this pages and pages long because we could add all sorts of quotes from all sorts of different people. And, and I don't disagree with the education component, I mean, it's, it's important for people to realize that, but I don't think that this resolution is the place to be including quotes.
Okay, well, we voted already, right?
Yeah. So we're not done.
So if that's the case, I, I guess I'll, I'll make a motion. I move that we accept the resolution as presented with the one amendment and instruct staff to bring that forward this evening.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurick. Discussion.
Well, I understand where you're coming from. I think we waffle. We, we should be the ones taking leadership responsibility, and when we waffle on what has been posted as a backdrop for us, and we say, "We don't want that backdrop as ours," we're waffling. I will vote for this, but I'm voting because that's the least we can get out of this council.
And I, I'm, I don't get the sense, I'm not a mind reader, but I don't know that two changes indicate that we're going to add pages. I, I'm not aware that, that, that that's indicated. So I don't have a problem with one addition, one addition, because I haven't heard that we've got, you know, 50 more things on the table. Now, as I say, I'm not a mind reader, but I, I think the assumption that this means that we're going to add many, many more things is, that's not an assumption that I'm willing to call fact.
Any other discussion? Okay, then, we have a motion on the floor by Adamson and a second by Lurick. Ruth, could you please call the roll?
And that is to have staff prepare the resolution with the one...
With the one amendment.
Okay, very good. Okay. Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then you've got this, you'll be able to get it rewritten and put together for a meeting tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, Councilwoman Ortega?
I would like to make a motion that we pass a business code requiring that businesses require masks, because small businesses are afraid to do that without being supported by us.
So...
And I...
Can we entertain a motion that does anything like that right now, or what do we need to do?
The only thing on the agenda for this meeting is the discussion of the resolution.
Whereas, the resolution falls short.
What do we, what do we do? Because Claudia has asked about that before, too.
I brought this up a number of times already, and...
Every time.
Every time, it gets, it's not, right, it's never the right time, so I'm a little frustrated, but tell me when the right time is.
Well, we've, we've had a meeting to discuss a face mask ordinance, and that, and that's what you're talking about, is a face mask ordinance.
This is the aftermath of that.
I'm talking about, and I don't want to call it an ordinance, because businesses are familiar with what codes are. They've got health codes, they've got, they've got all kinds of codes that they comply with. So code is the exact same thing, but it's something that directly relates to business. And so I think that that makes it easier for businesses to understand. The big box stores are already doing this, but they don't have anything to lose. You know, if you don't want to go, go to Lowe's, don't go to Lowe's. Lowe's isn't going to go bankrupt because you don't shop there this week. But the small businesses are concerned that they don't have support in requiring that. And again, like I said previously, that would not make our law enforcement the mask police because all it would be would, "Sir, ma'am, do you have a mask?" "No." "Would you like one?" "No, I'm not wearing a mask, don't try it on me." "Okay, well, then we're going to have to ask you to leave." "I'm not leaving." "Okay, then we'll just call the police, and they can come and deal with you as a trespasser, and you're disrupting our business, and blah, 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 blah." And it has nothing to do with the mask at that point. But we need to show support to small businesses. Because I'll tell you what, and everybody in this room, I know knows this because I'm not sitting in a room full of dummies, I'm not the smartest person here, but if we end up having to close down businesses, the small businesses that populate this town, many of them will not survive another shutdown. So if we can just help them by saying, you know what, we, we're making it so that you require, you have to require masks, that, that, that's all, that's, I think that shows support to the business community, and it keeps us open. It's all about the economy.
Okay, Linda, then, Chris.
I have, I don't disagree with the need to support businesses. The only issue I have here is that code is another word for ordinance.
Oh, I got that.
They're the same thing.
Exactly.
So what we're talking about is an ordinance.
Yes.
And we talked about that before and couldn't decide as a council to pass an ordinance.
Well, that was a different, that was a very different conversation we were having. First of all, code, yes, it was, code refers to businesses. Businesses have specific codes they have to comply with in order to do business.
Code is another word for...
I understand the synonym, I get it. But here's the thing, what we were talking about, that last ordinance, was telling every single person in Pocatello that they had to wear a mask when they were not at home.
I understand that.
This is a completely different thing.
I understand that. My point is, we are talking about another ordinance.
Yes, we are.
And so that is something that we decided last time not to do.
Only because it was, it was directed at every individual from the age of seven on up. That's why we voted not to do that.
I second Claudia's motion, so that we can properly discuss it. I don't think the motion, I don't think the motion is to do it right now, it's to get it on our agenda, and I think we can move to have things on our agenda if it's in context of what we're discussing.
That's probably a fair point.
And, and she has the right to say, this conversation extends to having a code conversation. And I second the idea that we can have that conversation over, more meat than just the motion.
Chris?
I just want to clarify that I did not vote for the previous ordinance, not because it was an ordinance, but because it put our, I believed it put our police in an untenable situation, and I believe because it was essentially would turn them into the mask police, or we would simply put in an unenforceable, or put an unenforceable ordinance in place, which I think demeans the value of our laws, codes, and ordinances, and I was not in favor of that. I was not voting philosophically to say that never under any circumstances would it be appropriate for this council to pass an ordinance that is enforceable, that does not leave our police officers in the crosshairs, and that supports, frankly, the frontline workers, the servers, the clerks in those businesses, because even if they wear masks, the protection to them comes from the fact that the clients, the customers, are the ones wearing masks. And if we care about those frontline workers, our best way to protect them is actually to ask the people who are coming into those businesses to respect their, the worker's health and wear a mask. You can do curbside, you can shop at, you know, in another town, I mean, you have options. So to me, it's analogous to saying, we don't say, every person 16 years of age and older must possess a driver's license. We don't say that. We say, if you want to drive a vehicle that requires a license and you're 16 years of age or older, you must have a license. But we do not, we are not dictating that you must have a license just because, and I believe that Councilwoman Ortega's ordinance follows that exactly. It's not saying what you have to do, it says if you want this privilege, these are the conditions, but you, and you have options. So you are not required, we're not impinging on your freedom, we're supporting these frontline workers.
So, okay, let's go. Linda, then, Heidi.
Okay. And I, I just wanted to clarify what my point was, that we're getting into content discussion here about a possible ordinance. My point only was between the words "code" and "ordinance," that's just another word for the same thing. I wasn't making any content commentary about being for or against. That's something we need to have a discussion on. I'm just saying, to call it a code is the same thing, so I don't understand calling it a different thing.
Okay, Heidi?
I foresee that there would be a lot of issues with what has been proposed, and I know that if we open back up the discussion of an ordinance or code, if you prefer that word instead, we are going to further antagonize people on both sides of the argument and cause more divisiveness in our community, which I think we all agreed was not what we wanted, it was not the result we wanted to see last time. We want people to be safe, we want people to be healthy, we don't want to have people feeling like somebody's trying to, you know, take away their ability to choose. There are plenty of people who want to wear masks, but who are against mandates and ordinances. And I think that opening back up an ordinance discussion is a mistake at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
So, yes.
We, as of yesterday, SIF reported at 5:00 PM that we had 397 cases in Bannock County. We've got 34 that are healthcare workers, and Pocatello has 63% of the county's population. There have also been, yesterday, reported 14 new cases on the reservation. And there's no fence, there's no containment, people, this is free America, people come and go. People come and go. So I would just encourage everybody to-- I'm not trying to piss people off either. I can appreciate that. I'm not. And like I said, I'm a less government kind of girl all day long. But I'm really worried about the hair cutting place and those little businesses that if there is a spike and they get ordered to shut down, they won't come back. And then the people-- The few people that they each employ won't have any place to work. So where are they going to work? It's not like-- It's not like this place is booming with good-paying jobs. So that's my concern. I know I'm going to make people mad by saying the word ordinance or code. The only reason why I want to use the word code is because it is more directed towards businesses. But at this point, I don't really care what we call it. I just thought it made it easier for businesspeople to grasp it as a building code, a sanitation code, a health code, whatever. We can call it whatever you all want.
And I think it's--
Yes.
You know, Claudia, those numbers-- One of the things that concerns me about those numbers is those numbers don't quote the healed people. 397 may have been afflicted with COVID since March, but at the point the last I saw, they're only about 140 or 50--
Right. Okay, so 331 people have recovered. So to your point, and I understand that. But this is not about people getting sick and not recovering. This is about if a large enough group of people get sick, our healthcare system won't be able to support that. That's what this is about. This isn't about me getting you sick and you dying for good-- This is just about the limited health resources that we have.
But that's built into the Southeastern Public Health Resolution, the thing that they adopted. One of the things that they are considering is the capacity of our local hospitals throughout the region. And the last numbers I saw, our local hospital has less than half capacity. And about half of their ICU beds are full of all ICU cases. But we still have plenty of capacity.
Because when we were here and those physicians were here and the director of PMC, he said that their ICU was full of just regular people. He said our ICU is at capacity.
So I think--
So anyway, I don't want to beat a dead horse. If you all don't want to talk about it, we don't have to.
The reason that Claudia, I believe, is bringing this, it's a multifaceted approach. Our position is one of staving off the spread of infection. We can't prevent it, but we can limit it. And this is a position of limiting. If businesses-- And I'm speaking from-- There are people who are wearing masks in their businesses and they're getting told off right and left. I mean, big time told off. I think we owe those people some support. I think making a resolution is a way to help them. But if they're working and they are wearing a mask and they're expecting people to wear masks because a larger entity has said that, they have support. And I know that maybe we won't vote as a consensus group. But I think democracy requires that we move this forward and see where we get on a vote.
So I've asked Matt Hunter, the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, to step up. You've heard the debate. You've heard the, you know, the discussion that's been happening here. Can you give us a feel for our small businesses in our community? Where they are? What's happening?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Wasn't planning on speaking.
I know that.
And what I do have to say is not on behalf of the board of the chamber because they have not taken a stance on this issue. Our business community is suffering. We heard of another closure yesterday, you know? And it's not a good situation. But I guess my issue about some type of rule for business is I believe business owners know best how to run their business. And I don't believe that they would do it-- Require masks because they have to or not require masks because they don't want to take some sort of penalty for it. If the business owner thinks the best option for their business is to require masks, they're going to do it. I don't think they're afraid to do it because of something else going on. They're going to do it because it's the best thing for their business. I think the national chains probably cave to a little bit of different politics than local ones do. But if they-- You know, I want masks in my business. If I think everybody walks at my door, I need to say, "I want-- I'll put a sign on my door that says that." And that's really what I think about it mostly for the business community. But I would say this, we all need to support our local businesses a little better and stop buying stuff online.
Absolutely. Okay, hold on, hold on. Now we've got Rich, Chris, Heidi.
You know, and to Matt's point, if I owned a local business, I'd promote the hell out of the fact that I-- If you wanted to wear a mask, come on in here. We're masking everybody. I think it's a marketing advantage in the current climate to promote the fact that you're requiring masks and that you have sanitized and you have a clean facility. And I haven't seen anybody do that. And I'm surprised that they haven't taken advantage of a marketing opportunity.
Chris.
How many-- Have you done any kind of an actual poll?
No, just talking to people regularly.
Right. So basically, we don't really have any concrete information. Secondly, of the letters that we've gotten, which I've tried to read, not just this recent packet, but I know we had one from a local restaurateur asking us to please support them in their efforts by passing some kind of a mask requirement. I am not aware, which doesn't mean it didn't happen. I just don't remember getting any input from local businesses saying, "Don't do this."
We did.
I got that signed this morning, just to be clear.
Yeah.
I was just with somebody this morning. And so I really hope they don't make us do that. They're on both sides.
Hope we did in our packet too, some email.
And I did hear from a local, very small business, basically an individual who teaches an artistic skill, who said, you know, "I'm done because I could use some support because I'm saying to my students, 'Hey, you know, I've got a family at home. You wearing a mask isn't about protecting you. It's about protecting me when I go home to my family.'" And this person said, "I really look to our local city council to help us really small businesses." Not the car dealership, not the insurance agency, but the true small businesses. And right now, it basically becomes very personal for those folks because they are the business. And their clients say, "Well, the city council doesn't think it's important, so why should-- How come you're being difficult?"
Okay, Heidi.
Okay, there are so many things to respond to. Matt is exactly right. Businesses will do what they need to do to protect their staff and to protect their customers. And businesses are capable and willing of making the right choice. I own a local small business, so I am very aware of this. I have not had people-- What was the comment earlier? Coming after me right and left saying, you know, giving me an earful, saying, "This is an unreasonable request that you want to keep your employees safe." I have not heard that. To the point of a, you know, music instructor who wants to require masks and wants support. I have a very good friend who has a music class. And she has said to her people, "We're going to wear masks." And she had a couple of them that said, "You know what? My kids don't really like that, so I'm going to choose to disenroll from the class." An ordinance from the city would not have made a difference in that situation. Nobody was being belligerent. Nobody was, you know, coming after her, giving her an earful. That was just the reality of the situation. And I think that will happen regardless of an ordinance. I really feel like-- I mean, all we have to do is remember back to the amounts of emails we got. And there were great arguments from both sides of the table. People have their reasons for or against. And we just do not want that kind of divisiveness and negativity and fighting going on in our community. We need to encourage people to be safe. We need to encourage people to be healthy. But we're really going to have an issue if we start getting into ordinances.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So can I just-- And I don't even know if this is legal. But I just kind of want to get a sense of the room. You don't get to vote unfortunately. But if I get a sense of the room, you're not interested in having-- Because here's what I don't want. I don't want to put this off to have another conversation and then we sit around and talk about it for six hours and nothing happens. That's just a waste of everybody's time. So if you're not interested in having the conversation, and Linda, if you're not interested, and Heidi, if you're not interested, and, you know, if you aren't--
You just made a decision for everybody. I never said I wasn't.
No, no, no. I'm just-- I'm just doing it in hypotheticals. I'm saying if you guys are not interested in putting this on an agenda for discussion and action, then I'm just going to pull my motion. And-- Because I don't want to waste everybody's time. So if it's not something that we can actually, you know, like discuss and come to some sort of an action, then it's just going to be a waste of our time. And I'm not interested in wasting anybody's time. That's not the point. So I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Chris?
Thank you.
Why? We don't know where we're headed. Chris?
Well, I was just going to point out that just because people aren't being really vocal and upset doesn't mean that we have a happy community. I am sure that all of us continue to hear--
I do.
In, you know, the grocery store, wherever, a variety of points. And I will tell you that the fact that it's placid on the surface does not mean that we have come to a place where everybody is copacetic. So the idea that we would be creating divisiveness by making a decision, I believe is an erroneous assumption. I believe that that divisiveness is there. What is really at stake for both sides-- For the council-- From both sides of this is respect. Do we have the courage to do whatever it is we, you know, we might or might not do? But do we actually have the courage to say, "This is a situation that deserves consideration and we are not-- We have the courage to have that discussion in public." I think that is what is at stake.
So, okay. And then I have a question. Heidi.
I think you're absolutely right, Chris, that it's not placid right now. I never did say that it was all placid and everybody was happy and there were no waves at the current time. I definitely think there is still-- There are strong feelings on both sides of the argument. And so I just wanted to clarify that. And I think you're also right that what is at stake is respect. And I think we need to respect our local businesses to make their decisions in this situation.
So Matt--
Yes, sir.
The motion has been withdrawn, but I do have a question for you because I think it's worthy of a discussion. I think that what would it take for you to get an idea of businesses and businesses' interest in an ordinance, a code, a requirement, whatever you want to call it, from the city council that they are to require masks? What would that take on your end?
I could do a survey. You know, the reality is I'm only going to send it to the members. I don't have the whole business community. So maybe it's a different crowd. And if I get a 10% reply rate, that'd probably be good. People just don't reply to surveys that way. But I'm willing to try it. I probably want a little help on exactly how I ask those questions. And maybe it's just one question. Do you think the city council should pass an ordinance requiring asking your facilities?
Why don't we--
I don't know.
Why don't you and I talk for a minute and see if there's something we could come up with? Because we do have a meeting on the--
COVID.
On August 20th. The city council will be discussing different things. And we could add this just for the information for the council to know where the business community is. Because it sounds like we're shooting in the dark.
The 13th, not the 20th?
20th. The third meeting of the month. Because the budget is done, we'll start that third week meeting.
So we're not having a meeting on the 13th?
No, we are. On the 13th, we want to have a meeting.
That's our study session. That's not where we can comment.
Yeah. Yeah. And then after the study session, we have those comments on that. So--
So the 13th or 20th?
13th is going to happen. We still have those meetings and everything on the 13th. But the city council meets for the third meeting of the month. We haven't done it because of the budget and everything. The city council in the past has been encouraged and wanted to have that meeting. And we just postponed it until the budgeting process was done. August 20th, we're done with the budgeting process. And we will have had a study session on the 13th, and so we'll be discussing that. And I could have some-- Probably have some stuff from the business community that the city council can at least have an idea of what the business community wants.
So you got that as an agenda item?
I'm not saying we would pass anything. I'm not saying we wouldn't. It would be more of an information piece from the city. Claudia and then Chris.
In order to not waste Matt's time or anybody else's time, I'll make the motion that we vote today to either discuss it on the 20th or not.
Would we have a public hearing for that, Jared? Because we wouldn't even have time to publish a public hearing to talk about it.
No, you wouldn't be required to have a public hearing. You could have one if you chose to.
We don't need a public hearing.
So that's my motion to just decide right now if we want to even talk about it. If not, it's-- We're just going to be wasting everybody's time.
And my point--
I'm sorry. So you withdrew the one, future items to discuss in the ordinance to require businesses to have customers wear masks. You withdrew that one, but then you're doing it again and attaching an August 20th date to it? Is that correct?
No, she just was--
I was just referencing August 20th because he was talking about that being the next--
Oh, your--
--meeting.
So the 2:00 meeting?
So I think, Ruth, the intent of this motion is to not waste Matt's time or the mayor's time or anybody else's time in this business community to find out if the business community is interested in this if we don't have an interest in talking about it.
Right. Thank you.
Can I say-- I think that's what you said.
That's exactly what I said. So if we don't have an interest as a group in talking about it, then just--
Okay. So you're-- It's basically, is council interested in continuing the discussion?
Yep.
Perfect.
And my point kind of goes to that, which is it doesn't sound as though we're going to have anything that resembles an authentic set of numbers. Because, you know, there are many of the really small businesses who are not members of the chamber for financial reasons. And so we would have no more information about that most vulnerable business population. And if the return is as low as you indicate it probably will be, then we really won't have anything that is--
Definitive.
--is authentic and valid in terms of numbers anyway.
I don't need to be surprised how many really small-- Eighty-five percent of my members have less than 10 employees. Many of them are home-based. Many of them are mom-and-pop businesses. Although there are hundreds and hundreds more that are not-- That are mom-and-pops that are not my members.
Right. Because if your member list is the same as the mailing list, I will tell you that there--
All right.
From experience, there are a myriad of--
There are probably 2,000 businesses in Pocatello that are not members of the chamber.
Small businesses, right. That are not on that--
Really? Really, man? Rich?
Well, if we want to get an expanded version beyond your membership, Matt, if you could put it on your website, and we could have the city put out a PR release directing people to that question and require names and addresses and phone numbers so we're not duplicating input, that would expand the ability to get a more representative sample.
But the question is still-- That was just an observation. I think there's a motion on the table.
I think that 10% is actually a pretty good response when it comes to a--
It is.
--survey of any sort. I think 10% actually is incredible response when it comes right down to it.
Okay.
About what we norm, 10 to 12, that's what we get on stuff. How will we norm, 10 to 12, that's what we get on stuff.
Let's see if we're moving forward.
Can we vote?
So we have a motion on the floor by Ortega, we have a second by Bray. Do we have any more discussion?
Sorry to prolong it. I did, I just had a couple of comments. And Councilmember Ortega, I don't want you to think like I'm blowing off your idea. I totally appreciate what you're trying to do and try to help people-
Oh, I don't think that.
You know, be safe and to support businesses. I just wanted to share with you that as a business owner, I already have that ability to call the police if somebody's belligerent at my business and not following my business rules, whether or not an ordinance is in place. So if I, as a business owner, say, "You need to wear a mask if you're going to come and be around my employees. I would like them to be safe, and I would like you to be safe." And somebody says, "Absolutely not, no way," I can say to them, "Then I'm going to have to ask you to leave, and if they refuse..." We already have the ability to do that. So I don't think that that is changed necessarily by implementing an ordinance, and that kind of plays to my comment before about-
But that's why we could have the discussion, because your thoughts might be augmented by a larger discussion.
Okay. Another comment is that I recently did some road tripping with my family, and as I traveled, I noticed that even in places where there were mandates, there were still plenty of businesses who, for whatever reason, they felt like it was their right to not follow that, even though it was an actual law and an actual ordinance. So I still think we're going to have a lot of the same issue. I mean, there may be some that say, "Yes, I would support face coverings in my business." And that's great, they can still do it, and there'll still be some, even if we mandate it, that don't. And then we're back into the whole issue that we were at before with enforcement and extra burden on our police and that type of thing. So those are my concerns, it's not that I don't, you know-
And I appreciate that. I appreciate, I appreciate you saying that.
Okay, so it's unusual for me to ever ask somebody, but we've already included you, so what do you-
I just had one other comment. You know, you made a comment when you decided not to pass the ordinance. Then it's about the law enforcement community. Well, what you're going to do is you're going to turn your business community into the law enforcement community if you pass it. And that's just, I was thinking it when you said it, and I just forgot the point.
So I want to be clear that the vote here, the motion, is to not pass an ordinance, is not to do any of that, is to, are we willing to have a discussion on the 20th of August? You put the date down.
Yeah, that's the next opportunity.
We're going to ask the CEO of the chamber to put out a-
That wasn't in the motion. This group wanted to discuss it further on the 20th.
That was, it was a clean, real clean motion.
Do we want to discuss it further or not?
Are there four or five here, a simple majority?
Then help me understand, are we going to be looking for input from the business community or not?
If we decide that we're going to discuss it, then we can ask them. But if we don't want to discuss it as a body, then there's no point in asking them to do that.
Okay, all right. All right, so we have a motion on the floor by Ortega, second by Bray. Ruth, could you please call her? Can we?
The motion is, is council interested in discussing an ordinance on August 20, requiring businesses to have customers wear masks?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, Ortega?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
I really feel like even having the discussion is just going to open the can of worms and fuel the fire, so no.
Gina?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, we will have a discussion on the 20th if we'll add it to, as an agenda item on-
For the 2:00 meeting?
For the 2:00 meeting, that way we can have a discussion and do that. Yes.
I have a question, which I'm not sure whether, it's probably-
So address me, and then we'll ask him.
All right, okay, all right, there you go. So I'll just throw this thought out. If we do not move forward with any kind of business code after discussion on the 20th, is there a way to look at our business whereas here, which is pretty oblique, and make it more pointed where, you know, so that this has more focus?
My comment is, we always have a chance to upgrade a resolution, just like you do a law.
Because that may be a way forward if, after discussion on the 20th, you know, it's like, okay, we're not going down the code slash ordinance trail, then if it's possible then to come back and take one of these whereas's where retail and commercial are referenced, we might want to amend the language there.
That's down the road.
Right. I'm just wanting to know, is that possible?
No, absolutely, you could always decide that you're going to come back and pass us a new resolution.
All right, thank you.
Sounds good. Yes?
I just would like to make one request to, for this discussion on the 20th, that I would like to figure out some way to hear from the business community, if we can proceed with that survey or however we're going to do it, but to get some information and input from them.
Okay.
I would just help with asking an unbiased question.
Then I will, I will work with Matt to put something together and see if we can get some input.
You probably need to get some of those statistics up at ISU to do that properly.
And Congress, I'd like to-
Matt, we'll visit about this, and we'll go from there. Yes, Chris?
I would like to make sure that Rick's idea doesn't get lost, where he suggested that it's not just the chamber, but it's using the resources of the city and the chamber to reach the larger community. I just don't want to, I thought that was a valuable suggestion, and I don't want to lose sight of it.
And we could also push it up to Old Town.
We can do it. Matt knows and understands, I think, the intent here. We will get as many people to participate as possible.
I'll just add, I know somebody that shifted several thousand dollars of purchasing from one retailer to another because of the lackadaisical attitude of one and the respectful attitude of the other.
So I think it does go both ways. Okay, thank you, Matt, then we'll do that, yes.
This is just for consideration as we think on things prior to that meeting. You're going to have a lot of questions arise about what exactly that would look like if you were to proceed with something like that, which, as I've stated, I'm opposed to, but you're going to have people asking, "Well, is this just for, you know, front-facing employees who are dealing with the customer, or is this for everyone, even if they're in their own offices separate? Do they just need to wear it when they're in the building?" Or, I mean, there are just a lot of considerations that people need to think about and that the business community would need to weigh in on also.
And I think there is language out there. I mean, ISU has some language around that, the very thing you're talking about, but-
And one of the things I think that we heard the day we had all the testimony was how important it is to find samarity, symmetry in our community with regard to who's requiring what. We know at ISU they're requiring masks, we know the school district's requiring masks. It seems to me that having discussion about masks is at least working towards finding some congruence with them.
So, okay, on the 20th, we'll have that as an agenda item, and we will have as much information from the business community. I will probably, council, reach out to the police department also, so we can have them involved as well, and then we'll just go from there. All right, thank you, council. I just want to double check, is Jared, do you, is that direction, we can get this changed and put it in?
Yes, we will have an additional whereas inserted into the resolution, and it will be ready for you at the 5:30 meeting for any more clarification, but not any more editing, because that's what this meeting was for, and then consideration at the 6:00 meeting.
Perfect, thank you very much. And we have a hard copy of the 5:30 meeting for everybody.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned.